Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April twenty second, twenty twenty five regular meeting of council. Councilor Mondo is due to work commitments. He may be trying to join us by zoom at his first opportunity. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at five thirty P M. And I'd like to call on Councilor Pupulcorn for the land acknowledgement, please.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of St. Andrews is located on Treaty One territory, the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Cree, Ojibwe Cree, Dakota and Denny peoples, and the national homeland of the Red River Métis. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit and Métis people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation and collaboration.
Thank you. Be resolved, the council adopt the April eighth, twenty twenty five council meeting minutes as amended. There will be an addition under new business item thirteen point two. Belkirk County District Community Foundation Nominating Committee. Are there any other changes? Can I have a mover, please? Councilor Slaker, Secondar, Councilor Hunt, all in favor. That is carried. Next, we have the, we have no reception of delegates, council reports. Thank you, everyone, for submitting them. Does anybody have any questions?
You did, you mentioned adoption of minutes, but then you did the agenda and you didn't do adoption of minutes.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
Because you had called it adoption of minutes, but then we did the agenda though, so.
Thank you. Oops, I'll explain. Be resolved, the council adopt the April eighth, twenty twenty five council meeting minutes as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Councilor Doran Boss, Secondar, Deputy Mayor Moretti. Any errors or omissions? All in favor. That is unanimous. It is carried. Next, council reports. Thank you all. Does anybody have any questions on any of the council reports? Hearing and seeing on, we have management reports. The March monthly management reports are all attached. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you all for submitting the reports. Excellent. Oh, Councilor.
For the public works in terms of the layout of the report for statistics, is there any other form of, you know, kind of visualization in terms of wards, maybe some graphs, like just better representation? I just find it all hard to go through and navigate through the way it's laid out. Do we have any other options for?
We have the service tracker, so we can expand on that.
Yeah, because I thought before in the past, we had like kind of a graphical kind of show kind of some of the requests coming in and.
Yeah, well, we, that's on there. You'll see the service tracker on there.
There used to be a pie chart actually of years ago of different colors of different requests for service and.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Go back and look and see what you look like.
Yeah, I just thought if there was any other options.
We can put that on.
Okay. Melon the two of them.
Yep.
Any other questions? Good hearing and seeing on next. Oh, go ahead.
Just sorry. Under Peter's report, there's a prepared draft survey. Do you got any public thoughts on the R M? Solid waste. You know when that's going up? Because I noticed there was a check for.
Within the next two or three weeks.
Okay. I haven't checked my mailbox for a week, so I haven't seen.
Okay, we're good. Next item eight, bylaws and policy, bylaw number four, four, one, three, unsightly property and derelict vehicle. This is on the first reading. Jordan, will you be speaking to this?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay, so this bylaw just is a little bit of an update to the previous unsightly bylaw. You'll notice that it's quite a bit shorter than the previous one. The, one of the biggest things that we took out was the enforcement piece because now that sits in the general enforcement bylaw, so it didn't need all that extra sort of enforcement issues that were actually there. We updated some of the definitions that were there as well. And we've also kind of condensed, rather than having it long and drawn out, we condensed what the unsightly property is, the standards that are there, and talking more about the amount of derelict vehicles that would be allowed on the property. And those are basically the only changes that's gone right from legal. Legal helped us create this and, and bring it into standard with the rest of the municipalities that are using the more updated unsightly bylaws.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilor Doran Boss.
If it's, when we get these updated bylaws, is it possible to have some sort of previous bylaw and then the newest bylaw with anything that's crossed out or in yellow so that we can actually cross-reference on it? Is that a feasible ask?
Yes, we do that.
Hundred percent, yes.
Track changes.
I would just like to comment, it's not always possible. Some of them are very, very old bylaws, so to try and black line pieces of it doesn't necessarily work, but I think that at the minimum, we can include the original one.
Yeah, I'm not asking for a brand new, brand new workaround. It's just something that helps out.
That's right.
Or even just the gist of, of the changes, like in a condensed version, to see if there's major changes, like the comment there of taking out the enforcement part of it, because it's in another, it's in another bylaw.
Would you like to see later request for a decision type of paper coming with the bylaws?
We, we can make, you know, we know what we have to make a decision on and just what we're making the decision on. I don't want to see any major, major changes on something that, you know, was, wasn't on the old one, you know.
That's like, do you want kind of a report format with the bylaw?
I think so. I don't know. It's easier to read and make a decision on. And then if we have any questions, then we can ask those questions on why you want to do it this way or that way, or, you know.
Councilor Slaker.
I have a question about something in the bylaw. Is that okay to ask at this point in time?
Yes.
My question is, under five C, you have vehicle, if the vehicle is completely out of sight of public view. My question is, why would we include that? I have four residents that are upset because of simply that the neighbor has hauled the vehicle into the trees in the back of their yard, which in turn pairs onto the back of the neighbor's yard. And apparently it goes on in the neighborhood to the degree of you can't see them yet. They're not there. So when I read that, that was the first thing I thought of. And my question would be, why would we allow that? So what, I can, I discard all in my trees around the yard and you can't touch me?
Well, I think the main purpose of the, the unsightly bylaw is to make sure that the neighborhood itself looks right, is appealing, is appealing like from a curative perspective. If that vehicle is unseen to the public, well, how would you know it's there? How do they know it's there if I can't see it and it's not disrupting the way the rest of the neighborhood looks as the, as I read the unsightly bylaw or the definition? How does that pose a problem?
Because that tree line is shared with the person on the other side.
Well, if it's still seen, if it's still, if it's still in view, that it's not actually out of public view, then correct. If they share that and that vehicle is, is in line, that someone else can see it, that it's not, it's still in public view, that it isn't following, then we would have to deal with it.
I think that's a really slippery slope. And I think that we would be better off to take that up. Unslightly yarded and unsightly yard, and then we debate this all the time. You could drive by and down my road and say, gee, Stacy's like a yard is a piece of crap. And meanwhile, Councilor Doran Boss could drive down the road and say, I like Stacy's yard. So now you have a difference of opinion, which does happen.
Does this whole thing.
Correct, but to leave a real, I like the whole bylaw. I'm, I'm very happy that we are here doing it. I just find that that one point is, is a real, is a slippery slope, I guess.
Well, I don't know, maybe we could have some discussion with, with council because it's a policy decision. It's not necessarily the director of public safety's decision, but it's the direction from councils, so. But that's what the will of council is, we'll, we'll change it.
Okay. It's only for reading, I understand. Yeah, it's like, okay, so five C, the vehicle is completely out of sight of public view. So you're basically saying if someone has it in their backyard and it faces onto the neighbor's backyard of that.
Say we share a big tree, say we, a tree line, right, between our things. And I'm popping, I pop four vehicles in there and you live on the other side. So the tree line is the end of your property, right? So what gives me the right over here to dirty up that tree line? Yeah, just, and I, I know that I have encountered this a couple of times when I have been out and about in the R M.
That would mean that, that would mean that the vehicle's still in public view, because your neighbor is still a public person. So you would have to have like a eighty or hundred acre field and then you dump it in the corner and a tree or whatever. This is still, I'm okay with this personally, because if I can see it, it's still a public view.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Councilor, I'll keep you with your head up.
Just a comment I've always had is unsightly, like it's a matter of opinion. One person's vision of unsightly or definition of unsightly is not what another person's is, you know, because some people just like to collect stuff for whether it be in your yard or whatever, like. And we have the same situation with some people with tall grass, yet they like tall, curvy grass in their, in their yard. It's not unsightly, but it's, there's no weeds in it and you can have it there. It's one person's opinion and one, one person's right to have on their property what they want. It's just, again, I hate overregulation some, some, sometimes in that.
It's not, it, sorry.
To that, like we have that place on Breezy Point Road before St. John's Boys School. How many years ago? That was put forward by the bylaw officer. We served him with A and B schedules and B. That man came here not happy, the resident. It's worse than ever.
Well, and we just had this issue since I've been on council and a resident in my ward that, you know, that the homeowner thought that all that stuff in the yard was quite fine. But the neighbors certainly didn't, nor did the people driving by. So you have, I, I have to, I kind, I disagree with this. This is required and yeah, we've needed this for a long time. So I thank you very much for that. I just, I don't know, I just think that's, I'm not sure why that's in there, I guess.
Councilor Pupulcorn.
What if we just took the word public out and the vehicle's completely out of view? Whether it's from a private residence, whether it's from a public street, whether it's from, it's just because they, you can have up to derelict vehicles on your property.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
So if it just says, it just says out of view completely. So I don't.
It could also be changed to being inside the structure. Because then it doesn't really matter, because if it's inside a structure, as long as the structure is an approved structure, then it's not violating anything and it's out of public view.
Dean, that's already five point one eight. That's in there.
Yeah, I picked that up.
B is the vehicle is in a side yard or rear yard. Rear yard of the property is covered by a tarp property, vast and in a good state of repair. Or C, the vehicle is completely out of sight of public view. So Councilor Slaker agrees with what you're saying. So that would mean if your neighbor at the back or the side is seeing all the, that's still public view.
I, I, I get it. I, I guess my question is like, if you took it out, there, there's no slippery slope. Because now I can be on the other side over here and, you know, now I got two neighbors frightened going, you can't see it. Well, yes, I can, you know what I mean, like? Well, I, I guess my question is, why would we give anybody in the R M an opportunity to kind of like stash stuff away? Be it a car, be it a, you know, an old canoe or whatever.
All right.
So where I was meeting with that opinion is on the definitions and it's on two C where it says, it says unsightly property means a property which in, in the opinion of the designated officer is detrimental to the surrounding area. It becomes the opinion of the person looking at it and some people have different views of what isn't, what is, what is unsightly. You know, some people go to the, you know, are really, you know, think a blade of grass or weed is, is unsightly or with something like that or, but it's towards the opinion of the designated officer, which is pretty broad.
The, it's, what it was, what it should say then, I would imagine, is that in the opinion of the designated officer within the aesthetic of the neighborhood.
There, thank you.
Within the flow of the neighborhood. So if this guy wants to have his, you know, waste on tall grass and nobody else does and everybody's pristine, well, then that becomes unsightly to the neighborhood.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Jordan, this was vetted by a legal, right?
Yes.
And I, and I have an example for, you know, someone's a perspective of what's beautiful and another person's not. I personally have been getting calls about someone has an antique car in their front yard. And, you know, I've driven by with some different people. When you think about that, wow, is that ever nice? And then there's neighbors that go, can you believe this person has in his front yard? I mean, it's shocking. This is shocking our whole neighborhood by having to look at it. So that's, that's an example I've had with, you know, some different perspectives.
I like the aesthetic comment because that, you're right, that gives the bylaw officer something to go on, right? Right? Like, I, where I live, you could have high grass and nobody would really care. But if I lived on some of these other places, beautiful places in St. Andrews, yeah, we all know people care.
Councilor.
It's going to be treated on a visual basis though, because we had one a couple of years ago where there was a tarp on a roof because the roof needed repairing and the funds weren't there and there was lots of uproar about a tarp on a roof in a neighborhood.
Well, we got that fixed. I did get that fixed.
Yeah, but there's been more since that also though, but.
But I, I agree with that.
But that's not, but that's not unsightly though. That's just the sign of the times. If you can't afford to do the roof or for whatever reason, like it's just, I have no problem with that. That's just me though. A little more free with, free with people's rights.
Okay, so good conversation. So everybody agree with Jordan changing the wording?
To what he just said. I like that, yeah.
Yeah.
To the aesthetics of the area, because we have so many different areas. You are correct. Thank you very much.
Okay, any further comments? Then be resolved, the council give first reading to bylaw number four, four, one, three, being a bylaw to establish a minimum standard to regulate usances, derelict and unsightly property as present or as amended. Can I have a mover, please? Councilor Slaker, Secondar, Councilor Doran Boss. All in favor? That is unanimous. It's carried. Next item, bylaw four, four, one, four firearms bylaw first reading. The bylaw is attached and the maps, and I believe Jordan will be speaking to this as well, please.
Yes. So when I first got here, this was like a bylaw that needed to be updated. It was from nineteen eighty three. There was multiple different pieces to this bylaw and been amended multiple times throughout the years, a lot of which was concerning the use of firearms in certain areas, so further restricting those areas and just updating with what went along. This one again came from legal, bonds in line with other municipalities within Manitoba. We updated some of the definitions. We also updated some authorized use and kind of taken all those amended pieces and put them together. Some of the offenses, again, the main offense, it stopped that almost in the general enforcement bylaw. And the one piece that is left to be updated is the map and, and where the restricted firearm section should be and what should be reduced to shotguns and kept as high power rifles. So that's really what's in front of you too.
Dave, thank you. Councilor Pupulcorn.
Yes, I know that we had some communication from a resident from the area here that voiced concerns about where he lives and from that correspondence, I understand there is some changing of the laws lines within Clan de Boy.
Yeah, and, and like all of this is up for discussion changes. These aren't anything, every option is not the option that's set in stone. Changes can be made to either one of them to come up with the option that council all agrees on like, or, or not making any changes at all, keeping the original what we have here. The idea behind the maps that you have in front of you though, is taking into account kind of high population areas, high density areas. You know, like for instance, here before you could walk here and if somebody wanted to shoot a shotgun right here beside the wall, they were free to do so. I don't feel that that's in the public safety's best interest, but that was allowed for whatever reason, right? According to our bylaw. But our bylaw, it doesn't matter what the other one is, we have, we have, if something happened here and somebody was injured in a firearm, who is the first level of government they're going to come to?
The less.
It's this one. Hundred percent of this.
What was the date of the original bylaw?
Nineteen eighty three.
Oh, so.
Before I was born.
Councilor Hunt.
So Councilor Pupulcorn read off what the provincial Manitoba hunting guidelines are, and that supersedes any municipal bylaw. So the municipal, the, the Manitoba bylaw says you can't shoot a gun within so many meters of, of, of residents. That means you can't bring a shotgun through here and shoot it.
Sure, it doesn't mean.
So that's what the Manitoba, which supersedes any municipal bylaw.
Sure, but it doesn't mean the residents won't come here and complain.
But it's a provincial bylaw, so.
Of course.
So we have lots of provincial bylaws that, that we, that we all as citizens obey. So, so this is, this is no different than, you know, it's been, it's been like this for thirty, thirty-five, forty, like, like forty years. It's worked, it's worked well. And, and where there is residential areas, there is Manitoba provincial laws in place for, for that. So I'm okay with the map as it is. And again, I like to see the wording changes and if there's any real changes from the original bylaws, which was two or three of them over the years, to what this wording is now. So again, a summary of what the report would say.
Councilor Pupulcorn.
I, I'm okay with definitely, you know, a bandwidth in high density, high populated areas. That one square that has the town of Clan de Boy that pretty much after Maple Drive to the, to the highway, you know, I, I would be fine with that being, you know, a prohibited area. But then as we see, it continues all the way past Colony. I would just like to see that shortened up to the town of Clan de Boy. That's.
Yeah, hundred percent. And any other, any, and any of those lines can be, can be removed, moved as, as council sees that it needs to be.
Councilor, Deputy Mayor Moretti.
Thank you. I got a little concerned here. On the original map, if you take a look, St. Andrews Airport is designated as no high power. No, oh, correction, shotgun and lock power only. I guess what the airport does is they do fire shotguns from time to time.
They fire more than shotguns from time to time.
Yeah. At any rate, they, they do that to control the wildlife and I'd like to see that remain remain a, a shotgun in a block power area.
Sure, I will mention that there are other deterrents to keep wildlife away than using firearms.
Yes, there are, but they do have them available and they do use them.
Councilor.
And there is also advantage to hunting geese in the fields around the airport, which there is lots of grain fields around there because it keeps the birds away, you know? So all the birds are going to have to do is read this bylaw and then they'll all go there now because they'll know, they'll know there's no hunting. And it, it happens, like West St. Paul is like that. The birds are complicated.
I think if the birds start reading these bylaws, we have bigger fish to fry than, or birds.
But in the same situation is around Petersville area. It takes in the whole two and a, like four or five square miles. It even goes past our present lagoon and, and then up in the northern part of the nearest valley, which the village of Denard, like I say, it's worked okay for shotguns in there. There's thousands of acres of, of farmland in there, which is recreational hunting purposes. So I'd like to see that remain as is.
So council, which option are you wanting to go? Do you see any changes to this?
I'd like to see the original one.
Councilor Slaker.
So just a question here. So updating the actual bylaw four, four, one, four, I just checking here, are we all in agreement with the wording to that? It's just the map that we're having issues with? Because I would like to see the bylaw be updated if it's been there since nineteen eighty-two.
This too was vetted by legal.
Yes, correct.
I'd like to stay with the original, but frankly.
The original map?
Yeah, original map.
Councilor Doran.
I'm okay with the original map. I was kind of, Councilor Pupulcorn, that was Clan de Boy being in red, but I'm flexible for.
See, I'm thinking there should be something, maybe where they're tired against me. There has to be something, please.
But I understand, Councilor, I'm saying that, you know, the provincial law will trump this, but it's nice for the residents to have something on a map saying, hey, you can't have anything in this area.
Only provincial comes.
Yeah, we still have that bylaw.
We're finding it harder and harder to have our C and P come and, you know, help assist us in areas. We were specifically told that our C and P had mentioned that with the increase in break-ins to people's properties in South St. Andrews, they don't have the capacity to do any extra patrols in the area or come assist if needed. That's what we've been told, so.
So what if I, I do it?
Councilor Hunt.
That, who, that's who enforces these laws.
And the game wardens. The game wardens should be more and more so, so they put on more game wardens, so they're the ones that enforce most of these shooting bylaws. Because it's in the hunting regulation, it's, it's in the hunting regulation book. Because every hunter gets one, he gets.
Either. That also gives our, our bylaws the ability to.
That, we still have that bylaw.
Anytime the shooting is done, it's after hours and bylaw is not going to go neither. So it's just, I have a hard time always putting bylaws together that we even have a hard time enforcing.
Well, we actually have the general enforcement bylaw now, which allows us the opportunity to enforce.
Councilor Pupulcorn.
The only other thing is that in terms of the definition of firearm, which includes, you know, paintball gun, pellet gun and, for a pellet gun and a BB gun, I know some residents, you know, for rodent control, pest control, there is some, you know, kind of use for that. I don't know if that, there could be an exemption for under a certain feet per second for some of these types of firearms. I don't, I don't know what, just, just, just a thought in terms of some of these, you know, bigger areas that are a lot in red, some of it would, you know, carry into some of agricultural land where a farmer might need to use.
That's listed here as an exception.
It is.
Yes.
Oh, but like for agriculture only?
Agriculture and property owners protecting their property from predatory animals.
Predatory, but not pest. Or, or my.
Like pests, rodents, yeah.
Well, they can be trapped though. The option would be to trap them.
It says, it says from rodents in here.
It does.
Or pets from rodents who have animal, predatory animals.
Quite uncapable.
I think the bylaw is fine. I just, the map, I said, I'm flexible. Clan de Boy in red, I'd be flexible with that. And then you're using a pellet gun, which doesn't really have a, a long range at all. You'd never even hit the tree across the road.
You can get, I.
Oh, you wouldn't.
You should try it with it.
But for the, you know, the Petersville area, the Martian, stuff like that, I can see where that would be kind of a gray area, do the ducks and stuff, but.
And the northern part of the nearest valley, like I said, too, there's been lots of migratory bird hunting in there. I'm okay with the wording in, like I say, the original map.
Yeah, I'm okay with the wording and stuff like that. I just, the map, I'm not sure about right now.
Well, how about, because as Lisa explained, like originally wanted to have a delegation come forward, residents were concerned. So the time we have second reading, because if anybody gets any concern, have them sent to Jordan. And then Jordan can report to council on second reading and the manifest can be there.
They also have a map reducing some of the residential areas, like as Councilor Hunt said, in the Petersville area, he said the extent has gone too far, while sucking some of that entity along the river. While sucking some of that entity along the river where they creep there, where that high density is.
Okay.
But again, there's, there's.
Is that agreeable to everyone? Because I mean, they haven't been updated since, as you say, nineteen eighty-three. And I appreciate you thinking, you can relax instead of react.
Well, so there's also those areas that now could be open up for development too, that that this could these maps do take into account as well.
Okay, so then should we do this as amended? Counselor.
Well, yeah, and I like to say, I, you know, the village of Clan de Boy is very easy to define, Petersville not. Um.
They don't have, maybe they don't have to be that actual piece, now we just, we can section out certain pieces.
Or leave it as is, I I I'm voting as is, that's my opinion, because it's, it's just too vast of a, of an area and like I say, you're gonna get.
So for second reading, I can bring two options back, the original, keeping it the same, and a reduced. A reduced restricted map.
That would be good. So second reading, let's find this is all the.
Then that's a vast change, then, if it's it's gonna be like we. Do from first reading to second reading should be minor clerical changes. If we bring another map in and affect lots of area, that's a, that's a big change again.
It's a simple change, it's gonna reduce. Well, council needs to see it.
I I just have a question about that comment.
Right, go ahead.
It's it's not actually in the bylaw, the map. The map doesn't go into the bylaw until it's approved by council.
Good.
So it's not really a big change to the bylaw, it's just a change to the map.
Yeah, I'll give you that one.
Thanks. Could we be resolved that council, your first reading to bylaw number four, four, one, four, being a bylaw to regulate. And control firearms in the municipality as amended. But I have a mover, please. Counselor people corn, seconded by Counselor Hunt. All in favor, unanimous, that is carried. Next item, PRSO three bylaw enforcement policy. Re-resolve the council adopt policy number PRSO three being the bylaw enforcement policy. Now that is attached, and Jordan, I, you will be speaking to this as well, please?
Yes. So this just uh coincides with our general enforcement bylaw, it further breaks out the policies or the procedures that are stated within the general enforcement. Balls or uh bylaw to, it it just further defines what it is that we're actually going to be doing and the steps that we're following. Keeps us in line, keeps us, uh, you know, thinking about the individual residents' rights as well to having things done as soon as possible. You know, or and explaining their right to appeal, certain things, their right to speak with council. Um, how fast we get things to them, uh, what else do we have in here, it also talks about. Um, I think the actual amounts can be put in here as well, but those are actually in, we have a. I don't believe that that is a policy piece, that is a procedural piece. Um, regards to the finding amounts, we're limited to a thousand dollars. So again, it just clearly defines the start of the process from when Chris delivers. Uh, the first warning, going through the steps, delivering the uh notice of violation, uh, the notice to comply. Um, any kind of uh finding issues that come with that, us taking action as we've done here in the past with council's approval to go in and take action on our own. Um, and then apply that to the residents' taxes. Again, it's just outlining what the general enforcement bylaw says in a little bit plainer language and and presenting more clear pictures. So that residents have an idea of what it is that we're actually doing.
Thank you, council member, Counselor Schlecker.
So, again, great, you're right up my alley, loving all of it. Um, but isn't there a provincial piece that'll kind of oversee all this too?
Uh, the the only real piece with the municipal act states is that we have. Um, we, we have to be in charge of enforcing our own bylaws and they set that fine. So, the general enforcement, which was created, which was created with the help of legal, as was this document as well, um, falls in line with all of that.
So where the, where are we at then with the, okay, first we serve the review, that's where we served the notice. And how many, I I didn't find in there where it said how many days we were gonna wait for the next one and all that.
Fourteen days. Fourteen days to give them time, because it it has to be, uh, after five days, we're considering those notices to be delivered as well, so it gives that. There's five days, five business days, right, that's how long the wait, and then gives them another five business days or in the weekend too. It's, it gives them adequate time to.
Okay, yeah, no, I I'm okay with fourteen, I I would, could never understand thirty.
No, uh, thirty days then comes after, um, if they want to appeal, they have thirty days, they have thirty days.
But we've had any.
The problem with that before is, is that there was no mechanism to enforce. Potentially, the only real bylaw that had the mechanism to enforce was the unsight. That was the real only bylaw that had the mechanism.
Okay, you have something to add, Brent, or no?
Or me?
Do you have something to add, or no, no, you're good?
Great job.
Okay, well, thank you, this is excellent. Any further question? Be resolved that council adopt policy number PRSO three being the bylaw enforcement bylaw as presented, could I have a mover, please? Counselor people corn is seconded by Counselor Schlecker, any further comments? All in favor, that is carried, is unanimous. Next item, check detail report, be resolved that council approve the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five check detail report. As presented, could I have a mover, please? Counselor people corn, seconder, Deputy Mayor Moretti, any questions or comments? All in favor, like unanimous that is carried. Correspondence for action, Red River Basin Commission, twenty twenty-five contribution request. Um. If someone, if you read it on my notes, it says here to be tabled to budget deliberations. Do you think Lisa, do I need a hover and second? No, no, okay. That's tabled. City of Selkirk Canada Day sponsorship. Um, be resolved by council author for a sponsorship to the city of Selkirk, can you match a thousand dollars in support of the twenty twenty-five? Canada Day festivities or table, the budget deliberations. Because we reduced, we gave them a thousand in twenty twenty-four. Counselor Schlecker.
I was going to add, to Jack, that that got tabled for budget as well.
Council good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, that will be tabled for budget as well. Okay, our meeting may first in the arm of Tashay. Be it resolved, who would like to attend the R meeting may first in Tashay? I will be attending. Counselor people corn, Counselor Hunt. Deputy Mayor Moretti. That's part one, two. Counselor Doran Boss. Are you, you don't need a reservation.
I don't need reservation.
Okay, so you're gonna surprise us, or will you become?
It would be surprise.
Okay, because I have to contact it, Minford, um, it was the report I missed last month. Art, right? I have a question, go ahead.
St. Andrews did, was on a couple of months ago, but like, why are we back up again? Because I never, I admitted to it at there, I never read the whole addenda, I never think of it. You're on the board, you should remind me, so here, when I got there.
Oh, you did, yeah, oh, I see, okay.
St. Andrews, so good thing the other two were long, so I'm for this one upcoming.
Yeah, I'll go to this one then too, please.
If you don't mind.
Do you know, does anybody know if Counselor Mander would be going? Usually doesn't. We, we just do all of council?
Okay, and then we can, um. We can confirm with them, yes, so it could be resolved that all members of council be authorized to attend the R meeting being held May first, twenty twenty-five in the arm of Tashay. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Doran Boss, seconder. Deputy Mayor Moretti, all in favor. Unanimous that is carried. Namec Annual Conference, all the information is attached on our agenda, be it resolved that be authorized to attend the Namec Annual Conference. Being held June seventeen, twenty twenty-five in Winnipeg, anybody like to attend? Okay, because normally Sherry, Jordan, or we don't need the rest of the staff, we should go to this, so can we table this for information?
Yep.
Be it resolved that be authorized to attend the seventy-seven Darewood RCSCC Battle of the Atlantic Parade. Being held May fourth, twenty twenty-five in Selkirk. Who would like to go?
All of them.
Deputy Mayor Moretti, anybody else wanting to go? Okay. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Hunt, seconded by Counselor Doran Boss, all in favor. That is unanimous that is carried. Lord Selkirk School Division Safe Grad, if I be it resolved that Mayor Soling guest be authorized to attend the Lord Selkirk School Division Safe Grad Ceremony. And dinner being held June twenty-sixth in Selkirk. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Doran Boss, seconder, Counselor Schlecker, all in favor. That is unanimous that is carried. Correspondence for information, Gordon Howard Center, anybody have any questions or anything? We have no older or unfinished business, new business, St. Andrews Fire Department branding. Um, thank you, Jordan, we see your info is attached, would you like to speak to this?
Uh, yes, kind of I brought up last year around this time that we, as part of the, um. Kind of the new, where you're about to think of the fire department, you know, bringing them under one department as opposed to three departments as they've been operating. And for the last few years, um, the idea was to, to help with that, here, I have uh, had a logo redesigned. But not only incorporates the St. Andrews Fire Department, but indicates the individual halls and keeps their, their individuality as well. Uh, at the moment, they're all using the same logo, um, that you see, it's uh, it has the. This, this one doesn't have that. That one that they're using, they all use, you can see it on the side of the Clan de Boy hall, it has the, the church in the middle of it. Um, it talks about in Union of Strength, we have the old, uh, piece that we have from our. From the RM logo. But basically, with the idea with this speed, so then unite the three halls under one banner, again, while keeping that individuality. Uh, modernizing the look and giving it a more professional feel as that logo that has been used. For a number of years, has uh, you can, it looks like it's been copied and pasted about, uh, you know, a hundred times. So it was starting to look really faded, really dulled out blurred lines were in there. And as far as I can find, was never approved by a council. So this way. It's uh, you know, this, this logo is coming here to you guys, uh, for approval. Um, and as you go through it, the second page there then, um. And it shows you, you know, this north hall, center hall, south hall looks, and some wording to go with it for signage. Um, it gives you various different color options when we're looking at signage, uh, clothing, that sort of thing, it, um. The um, digital designer, I guess, is what that moved for her to ask, she also provided the color types for us. Um, and provide us how it's gonna look on different types of clothing, they also, if you notice. Um, the illustration pieces, so if we have any Canada Day events, uh, any other events that we wanna tie it to the municipality or or Manitoba, whatnot. Uh, she created the illustrations for us to be able to use for these events as well, that can be added. And then what it would look like on shirt signs. Uh, letterheads, uh, any kind of clothing or uh, shrank, I guess, for lack of a better word. The hall, hall chiefs have looked at this, they've all approved it, um, some modifications during the early stages of the logo.
May I ask why there's a, it kind of threw me off when I looked at it, there's a church in the center?
That's the church down on uh, St. Andrews Road, it's a historical piece for the RM. Um, again, that's what they've been using for a number of years now. So, with keeping with some tradition, um, again. We, we chose to kept, keep it in there and just update it.
Counselor Schlecker.
Well, Mayor will ask my question, it's just a fire department, why is the church in the center? Because I don't think the church is part of our actual RM logo when it was reformed. My question would be out of respect, because it is a fire department logo, wouldn't it be much better to put a fire truck in the middle of it?
Good. Uh, again, it was just, this is a.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know.
Right, with a lot of historical landmarks, that, that piece again was, is a legacy piece that those uh, fire halls have been using for. I don't even know how long that logo's been around for, um, so again, keeping with the tradition. Keeping with the historical, with uh, you know, sentimental value, I guess, uh, of that, I don't know if sentiment is the right word. But um, this is something that all three chiefs.
I would, I would rather see a fire truck in a church. No disrespect to the church.
We know the fire departments. Would Matlock have issues because the South St. Andrews Church aren't red?
They didn't have an issue with it.
Oh, they don't?
Nope.
Also, they all agree with it?
All three chiefs agree.
Uh, so the origin, this original logo, like what was the original design from? That this was an old, similar to an old logo?
Outside of your hall right now.
Right, right, that's not, there's been multiple variations over the years, um. In terms of. A option that for the halls, were they given an option to completely design or redesign their own, or was it taken from an old logo? And just made modern, and then this was an option to go from?
Um, well, when we, we discussed, we discussed pieces that we'd like to see in there, and this goes back to it still being head. And everybody agreed, because we're all using that logo now to keep that same center church in the logo. And just changing the way the monkey's cross is, and a lot of the stuff that you see in monkey's cross as well, like. You know, fire hydrants, that's where we don't have fire hydrants, so rather than determining what we keep there, it was just to have the cross, the monkey's cross there. Keep that church, find a different way of of kind of modernizing.
Yeah, um, I I guess this church is not that recognizable. I was thinking of something, you know, more along the lines of something from, or for Gary that is, is recognizable and people, uh. Uh, anyone looking at it would immediately know that it's still for Gary. As opposed to, I, when I looked at this, I thought it was a uh, steeple for a fire station.
Yeah, sure. Um, that involves it not being changed for.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Dirk, this is difficult to do, I know it's hard to do, and being in the design and print industry, this is not an easy thing. Can't please everybody at all, they'll never have one person to meet. Or you're not gonna have a group that's gonna be agreeable on everything, so design is very difficult to do. I knew right away what it was, because it's kind of my area, and we have a lot of history, and that's South St. Andrews portion of it, Kennedy House, the rectory. Um, St. Andrews Church, um. It's maybe a little bit too big, but it's not a game changer for me, it would be nice if it was just more of a church, but uh, that wouldn't. Turn me away from this logo whatsoever, so, uh, again, thanks for doing this, I know how difficult it is, so uh. I I I'd be okay with it per se, but um. This would be something that would be going into other design in the RM itself, so not just for the fire department, but it would be carried on to. Administration stuff, uh, or is this just?
The doggy looking things.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, Jordan showed me an idea, because there's no RM of St. Andrews on.
Yeah.
Where he had someone looking at it, just to do RM of St. Andrews.
Yeah, that's, at the end of the day, this is not gonna, for me, it doesn't make or break, I I knew exactly what was my.
Um, I just know from experience, I know that none of the current fire departments have this logo on their shoulder crest. It's an older shielded type of a design, um, and I know that one on. In front of Clan de Boy, that was only put up there only a few years ago, I'm not sure where that design came from. Um, but you mentioned the chiefs were involved in this, were, do you know if there was any discussion? Were members within the halls communicated with this, or were they involved in the design, or?
No, it's the chiefs as leadership.
Yeah. All right, you.
I just have a, just, just quickly, the, the chiefs, right, we entrust them to run the halls. So, I mean. How can we, you know, tell them that they're doing it wrong? how can we, you know, tell them that they're doing it wrong?
Again, we were saying, I just, from what this original design came from, is just my only concern is there's, there's no other options to, to go with that was presented to the halls or is this the only option?
Illustrations, that was.
We went, we, it was a discussion that we had at the, I asked them, we said, we can, we can redo, completely come up with a whole new one, we can update this one, the idea was made to update this.
Jordan, how many members do we have?
Ninety members, probably.
I'm just going to say, if we get ninety members involved to come to an agreement on what we want it to look like.
That's what I said, but if there was an option for, you know, people to throw out, you know, designs or creative design, right? Like have the members involved in, in somewhat shape or form. Um, but that was all, I was, like, I don't know if this is
I just, I mean, your chief approved it.
I don't know, I, I understand that.
If all the chiefs approved it, they're the ones wearing
That's it?
They're wearing this logo.
I would still rather do it, be thanked to a fire truck.
Yeah, but see, when you see on the illustrations, that doesn't even look, that doesn't look like a fire truck.
I'm sure we could get an illustration and okay, it's a hundred out there.
Councilor Hunt?
I like Deputy Mayor's, Morecky's comment about Lower Fort Gary is, is stand on. When I first looked at it, it looks more like an elevator, and look at this, when you look at the Saskatchewan, some of theirs looks like an elevator, but to me, it, I don't know, it's like good job on, on getting it together and that and for, for conversation and that, but I'd like to see something more geared to a fire, to a fire department.
Okay, but here's, oh, sorry. Here's my question, and if you can wrap this up right here now. So Councilor Fevelcorn is talking about there's deco that are on, on your uniforms and all that kind of stuff, right? If we go with what you're, you're presenting here, there's got to be a cost difference between just building on the original one and adding some stuff to it compared to as Councilor Fevelcorn says, and I'm saying that change it completely, right? So cost wise, we would be better to just stick with what you presented here, is that a correct assumption or not?
Um, I mean, they took what we had, they updated it, they kept that in there, but I mean, it is completely not, not a new design, but the old one, it, it, the cross is, is different. It's the same boss, it's just designed differently. Um, it's the same church designed differently, I mean, if you were going to update some, you, if, I don't know if the cost would be anything, we've already paid, would already had to pay for this.
I would cross fire axes. I just thought I'd throw up.
That's where a lot of them are, actually.
Are we just like everybody else though? Do we have a little bit more historic significance here in this RM?
Well, I think we do, I think Lower Fort Gary would be great, uh.
Then that's also a federal.
Well, it's still an RM.
But it's not our building, like, we don't know.
It's here.
Yes, I don't, I don't go for the fix, I
Yeah, I have nothing against the church, I just, I just don't feel it's, you know, out of the options that were presented are going, I I personally would rather, if the fire chiefs, if this is what they have approved, then you're my same. I'd be like the Lower Fort Gary. Option, but.
I don't know what's it.
You get, you get a million different opinions.
Yeah.
This is why, this is why you have three fire chiefs making the decision and not ninety members of the fire department.
This is probably why they never gave you guys other options previously. Not you guys, but I mean, council.
And this has already been paid for, this is already the
Well, I haven't, we haven't, I haven't, I haven't, we haven't gotten the final bill.
It's not in production.
No, just, she's just waiting on the, uh, final comments. It's all, it's all ready to go.
Just, was there options for a different centerpiece, provide, like, given to the fire halls or this was the only option given?
That's the option that they agreed on before we even started this. The initial talks said, what do we want to have, and they all just said, well, why don't we just use the one that's in there? So that's what we did.
So I'm assuming if they have other stuff with that, it would save money replacing that, right? Or no?
Pardon me?
If this is what was their, continues this, if there's other things that some things would not have to be replaced because this church steeple already
Well, it's, I mean, whenever you drive by the fire hall, that's the sign, that's what you're seeing out there on the fire hall now. I mean, the steeple looks different, but it's still the same steeple, right? So if the fire department is already using that, why would we differ from that?
Good point. Well, it's whatever council wants, I'm, I'm good. Doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't inhibit them from doing their job. Right?
Well, it just makes them so they're all the same now.
I mean, the, the current logo that we're using, it does not look professional and it looks very clip arty from the nineties. This looks professional, is that not the kind of you know, thing we would like the residents to see? In our fire department is look professional?
Councilor Sliker?
So that will have to be like built into the budget to have all this redone, am I correct?
Already done, it was built in last year's, never got there. And the re, the, the rebrand has already been approved in last year's budget, it's just with all the stuff going on and, and more pressing issues with bylaw and, and the fire department that we can, we still have time for this.
I'd like to see a fort built, like I say, if I show it for, uh, like I say, it's, I didn't recognize this in the beginning, I finally recognized that it's a, a church, but I don't know the relationship to St. Andrews or to the fire department, I know the state to St. Andrews, but not to the fire department.
This is just highlighting the historicals of the RM.
I don't have a problem with it. You know, the, the more we, the more we go and try to make something different, it's going to cost more money and it's not cheap to do the side, so I, I don't want you to sit there and start blowing your budget because it doesn't, I knew what it was right away.
I've, I've never seen that logo in nothing before though.
Uh, at the end of the day, it's what the chiefs want.
Yeah.
Councilor Sliker?
Yeah, it, it's a lot of money and if this is what your three fire chiefs are in agreement to.
Is that
I could argue if three chiefs said yes to that, so I won't give them.
Okay, because the more we do, and they'll venture with the more money.
I'd rather see a new, that with it on it, I'm trying to get towards that.
I'm doing that too.
Be it resolved that council accepted for politics, St. Andrews Fire Department logo as part of the previously approved rebranding strategy. Can I have a mover please? Councilor Doran Boss, seconded. Deputy Mayor Morecky. All those in favor? Opposed? That is unanimous, it is carried. Thanks for all the work you did on that. Next item is the, um, addition, Councilor Hunt asked the Selkirk District Community Foundation nominating committee be attached. Uh, be attached to this agenda.
I know why it's on here, I'm not sure why it has to be on here though, so, um, give a look at the history of it.
You asked in your email that it be included on the agenda.
I know. It stems from an email that we all received on May or March twenty-eighth, uh, seeking, uh, two positions to be nominated or to be suggested board members for their foundation. Some names were given to me, I sent an email back to council on April the eighth stating a name of an individual. When I asked the individual, uh, their interest, I also presented them with the, um, what is asked for in the in the, uh, form, uh, to provide professional and volunteer development foundation awareness document. And it's encouraged to be shared with the potential nominee so they know what the board entails and what the, uh, eight different committees are. And, uh, on April the tenth, we received an email back, hi everyone, when the email was sent, uh, about the foundation, I did not receive a response back, so I contacted a person who expressed interest. Um, residents currently doing up a bio. And then I sent another email back stating that I didn't know there was a timeline, the timeline for this nominations is May twenty-ninth. So from the time I sent the email back was sixty days back before the nominations are due and, um, so in saying that, uh, as a, as one of the board, as one of the board directors in the, in the nominating committee, are your job, I think, as well as the other eight people's jobs on there, which is, um, a member, the mayors from City Selkirk, St. Andrews and St. Clements, Chair of the East Interlake Health Authority, Chair of Lord Selkirk School Division, President of Friendship Center and President of Selkirk Biz and the chairperson of the foundation. They are the eight people on the nominating committee. And I know there's other municipalities taking more than one name to it, this isn't a St. Andrews person, it's not a competition, it's to benefit the board, so I think we send in, if anyone's interested in becoming a board member, that their name should be considered.
Well, as I stated in my email, since I've been mayor in twenty eighteen, I forwarded this to previous councils in twenty eighteen. There has never been any referral made to, to, to sit on the committee. I have a list of people that have contacted me in the past that they're interested to sit on the board. The issue is, I have this woman, I, I'm bound by confidentiality, this council is not, I'm bound by the community foundation bylaws as I'm on the nominating committee. And that's why I didn't, your one email to me said, and I explained that in an email, said, I never gave you a date to respond. Well, since twenty eighteen, I've never ever had a response from a council member.
Okay, do you think eight days is fair time to respond? Or a second email sent out, uh, has any, it took eight days to contact the person, to send him what you should have sent, did you send that to the person about what the board is about?
Well, at this point, you're
It says right in here, did you send it to her?
Yes, I sent all the information because she was on my list, I've had other people on the list that I contacted.
So in saying that, eight days is, uh, ten, ten days is not sufficient, uh, turnaround time to, uh, a deadline is May twenty-ninth. And to me
See, I never even saw that because I've never ever gotten any input by a council member as long as I've been mayor. And then you could have advised me that you had someone in mind.
I didn't.
When I sent
Eight days after.
You, you, you did not acknowledge the email, you did not send a response.
I didn't have a response when you sent me out the email. I had to contact the individual and send him the information which is entails of what is, 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 is involved in being on the foundation and to see if that person would be interested. It took that two or three days, and I figured that ten days is pretty sufficient time for a, a sixty-five or seventy day deadline. And
Councilor Sliker?
I'm not too sure why the, what we're we have two people that are interested to put their names forward. That's great, like you said, since in two thousand and eighteen, we haven't had anybody, okay, it's twenty twenty-five, two people have come forward. To me, we just put the name forward, it's got nothing to do with the council, we're not going to choose who's going to be on it.
Council resolution, but it's out there in the public already, it's John Prime, that Councilor Hunt.
Excuse me, that should be confidential.
No kidding?
It's out in the community that wants
It's not around this, around this table.
Wow, why? We've had discussions
We're going to go down that road now, why not we say, why you don't want that person on?
When we've had discussions before, for when John Prime was the acting, took over the mayor position.
Let's not even go there, let's stop, let's stop that right now, that has nothing to do with this discussion and, um, all I'm saying is
Say something please. Okay, this is the way I view this situation, um, okay? The Selkirk Foundation, they have asked us to cast a net, okay? And that's what we did, we cast a net, maybe the timeframes were a little bit off here or there, we cast that net, we got uh, two individuals, okay? It's not our job to judge these individuals, these individuals will be judged uh, by the nominating, by nominating committee. So whether we have two, three, or perhaps in some cases maybe zero to put forward, uh, that's okay, whatever, whatever we have, we should give the
Yeah, I agree.
This is a good thing to have, you know, and let the nominating committee, the other eight, the other seven people as well as yourself, make that decision.
Okay, I agree, Deputy Mayor Morecky, that is fine, it's, um, upsetting, of course, after what I've been through. But as a member, one of the three mayors on the nominating committee, I will address all my comments, I will save them for that.
Pardon, pardon me?
I will save my comments for the nominating committee.
I don't think that's part of your, part on the nominating committee to share your personal feelings.
I'm speaking on behalf of residents, that's my job.
Again, this position is nothing to do with the residents of St. Andrews, this is to do the, of the community foundation, which we have, which I'm a member of several, of several funds within that foundation as well as the St. Andrews Fund, the St. Andrews Airport Fund, so I want the board should take the best interest of, of, of the best board members, which is what is stated in what the foundation does and, and the other eight different committees that they can be on, but this is a pretty important position, it's not a St. Andrews region, it's a foundation position.
And they're asking for St. Andrews residents, each are
It doesn't say that.
Well, you just said it as well, you're using St. Clements in the past, has put in two, I know Selkirk's always just put in one. The school division puts in one, everybody on the nominating committee got this email. St. Clements puts forward, St. Clements person, Selkirk puts a St.
St. Clements is putting two names forward.
Well, that's fine.
Exactly.
We're St. Andrews, we can have a unique identity. You want to go that route? Then Clements has lower indemnity rates, why aren't you bringing that forward? You know, we can have an individual, uh, identity.
You can sure stray from the topic that we're talking about, that's, I've never seen that before, anyway, anyway, um, so the fact is, are we taking two names, will you take two names to the foundation?
Well, there, yes, that I put in my email, the normal procedure is, an individual wanting to apply sends me the brief file. I sent it to the executive director, they put together in the package.
Okay, I'll send you the bio.
That's fine, that's great, and then I'll forward it to, uh, the executive director.
Okay, that's simple, we could have
So why did you, I want to know, one question. Why did you bring this before council, to put the new council on a position?
Because you said to me in an email, I'll, I'll, I'll read it to you. I'll read it to you, hi Laurie, it is unfortunate you did not respond to my email today, indicate you have someone in mind as soon as, as soon as the email went out to council. How can I respond within a day or two? I guess that ten days, I think, is pretty satisfactory on a deadline that was going to be May twenty-ninth.
Yes, but my question is, where did I tell you that it has to come before council?
You didn't.
Well, that was just what I said. Why did you want this brought before council? In your email, it says, you give the dates, um, but I gave no deadline in the email. You please have this added to the Tuesday council meeting, or I will ask to have it under new business.
Right, so how else are we going to get you to, to take this name to forward on behalf of the foundation?
This name is mentioned in twenty eighteen.
But you said to me, unfortunately, you couldn't, because I was too late in replying to the email.
Then unfortunately, I would, I didn't say that.
Well, I don't know, it's one of my, hi Laurie, is it unfortunate you did not respond to my email to indicate you have someone in mind as soon as the email was sent to council? It's unrealistic to expect an email to be that, that you sent on March twenty-eighth and I replied on April the eighth that I had someone in mind, that I could give a name. And I, I, I did follow, follow the proper procedure that is in the letter to you, that I send the, um, letter to them stating what is in, I provided a professional and volunteer development foundation awareness document that is encouraged to be shared with the provincial nominees to see if that's what they're capable, what they, what they want to do. And then I get this email back saying, it's unfortunate you didn't respond sooner, so in my mind, you're not taking that name forward, that's what I And then I get this email back saying, it's unfortunate you didn't respond sooner, so in my mind, you're not taking that name forward, that's what I, so.
Well, you sent the proper procedure, you did not let me know, well, no one ever let me provide a name on this council. And you've been here since, what, twenty years? No one has ever provided a name for me to be sent forward, or people contact me.
I just did the.
So that's why when I got no response back from council, didn't hear from any, I never expected.
Is eight days a, is, I mean, is eight days an unexpected response? Eight days on a, on a, on a, on a, on a sixty-five day deadline?
I didn't even look at the deadline, cause everybody's busy, and I mean, I honestly, I, I've nev- as I said. I've never had a response back from you or any member on council, want to put a name forward. So I just moved ahead, I had the lady had contacted me, put it forward.
Anyway.
I think we just put this to rest, and what we need to do is just put the names forward, let the board decide what they wanna do. And um, it becomes a democratic vote, and we're done with it.
Counselor, I have nothing to do with it.
I agree. But that was my question, Councilor Hunt, why he wanted to have to put this on the agenda? There was no reason.
I, I just told you why, but, anyway, alright, thank you for taking both of the nominated people to the board then. I'll forward it to bio.
Okay, next item is in camera. Be resolved that council move in camera at six forty-one PM. To discuss matters that are in preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public. Could prejudice the municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations, as well as legal and personnel issues. And be it further resolved that the members of council agree to keep him confidence. A matter that is discussed at a meeting that is close to the public, under section one fifty-two-three. And that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matter is discussed at a meeting of the council or a committee conducted in public. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Dornboss, second or? Councilor Feeblecorn, all favor? Unanimous that it carried. We are now in camera. Thank you. Be resolved that council move out of in camera at seven forty-eight PM, could I have a mover, please? Councilor Slaker, seconded by, uh, Councilor Dornboss, all in favor? Gary, oh, and I should mention, um, Councilor Mondor was able to join us for a portion of the meeting by Zoom. We have one resolution coming from in camera, um, Lisa, if I could ask you, please, to read the resolution.
Yep.
Be it resolved that the council of the RM of Saint Andrews approved the extension for the removal of the structures from the property. Uh, roll number five one nine one seven five to May seventh, twenty twenty five. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Slaker, second or? Councilor Feeblecorn, all those in favor? Those opposed? Councilor Hunt, Councilor Mondor?
He's in favor.
Pardon?
In favor.
Okay, so that matter is carried. Next item is be resolved that the council meeting be adjourned at seven forty-nine PM. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Dornboss, seconded by Councilor Hunt, all those in favor? That matters. Good night, everyone, have a good evening.
Night, everyone.